Good morning. Welcome to the December 13th, 2018 Placer County Planning Commission meeting. Would you please stand and join me in the place?
...................................................
Thank you. Sue, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes, good morning. Mr. Haughey is absent. Mr. Hersog?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Rokuchi?
Here.
Mr. Sevison?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Nader?
Here.
Thank you.
Before we hear from the planning director, there's a couple of sort of housekeeping things. First of all, thank you for being here and participating in this important public outreach on the issues that are going to be before us today. Second is that if you do want, if you want to participate in speaking on the items later, our second and third items, that there is a sign up sheet on this table over here in the center, and you'll need to sign that up because we will be calling people up based on that to speak on those two items. So, please do that. And before, again, the planning director comes up, I just wanted to, again, say that you need to be thinking about if you are going to comment on these items today under the public comment on each of these items, that I'm going to only allow three minutes comments because it would appear that we're going to have a lot of people who want to speak today. And so, I want to make sure that we have the opportunity to hear from everyone. I'm giving you a heads up on the three minutes so that you'll have time to think about what you would like to communicate to us in that three minutes, the most important things that you would like to communicate. And on those two items, again, a heads up, on the Government Center and on the White Hawk Project, those are both draft EIR, so we're not going to be talking about the merits of that, those projects. We're going to be talking about any issues that you see within the draft EIR project where, document, excuse me, where there was any deficiencies or areas that you would want to challenge. So, it's not, again, talking about the merits of those projects. We'll get to that next year sometime. So, again, thank you for being here, EJ, if you'd like to give us a report.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission. EJ Valdi with the Planning Services Division. So, this morning, I think I'll start with recent board meetings, upcoming board meetings, just to bring you an update on projects that have come before you recently and where they're at right now, starting with the FTCR appeal. That was the Atwood Road property where unauthorized structures were built, not meeting the setback requirements. The board denied the appeal to allow the fence, remember there was a fence in this front setback. They also denied the appeal for the secondary dwelling that was built in the setback. The applicant had agreed to modify that structure, take out all the plumbing so it's not a secondary dwelling, and also kick it up, jack it up, and move it to an area that meets a setback requirement. The board did ask us to come back on December 18th, which is next Tuesday, to consider upholding the appeal on the patio cover itself that didn't make setback, meet setback. So, we're going to, we'll bring findings and conditions for consideration by the board. So, that'll be our third trip to the board on that item since we, since your commission took action on that. The zoning text amendments, which a lot of people have some concerns about, these were the numerous updates to Chapter 17 of the zoning ordinance. This item was continued to the December 18th board meeting from November 20th. Staff had numerous comments that it is too complex and large for to be considered at one time. So consequently, staff is anticipating that the proposed amendments recommended by your commission will be brought back to the board in more manageable sections that will allow for ease of review by the public and the board, and we hope to do that in early 2019. You know, there were several components to that ZTA regarding the ground mounted solar, street site setbacks, cellular sites, and so we'll take those individually to the board just so when they go, everybody has a, you know, very, they'll be very, have a very clear understanding of what actually is being changed. What the board had in front of them was a 300-plus page zoning ordinance, and it was just, just, what we learned was it was too difficult for the public and the board to get through all of that. So, anyway, so that will be starting in 2019. If we, if there are any changes to any of those, not consistent with what you recommended on individual items, we would bring that back to the Planning Commission first for you to take another look at it. Let's see, the board did approve the community plan amendments to incorporate the 2018 Placer County Regional Bike Way Plan as recommended by your commission. And their next meeting is going to be next Tuesday, as I mentioned, that's December 18th. It will be held at the Roseville Fairgrounds instead of at the domes. Under consideration at that meeting will be the tiny house zoning text amendment, Meadow Vista Community Plan Amendment to the circulation element to address the bicycle and pedestrian safety on Placer Hills Road, both of what you recommended or supported going to the board. And then also the ones I just mentioned, the ZTA and the FTCR appeal will be there as well, but a continuance on the ZTA, that's a request. Planning Commission meetings. We're getting into a very busy time with a multitude of projects coming forward and EIRs that are being prepared. The first meeting of the year is scheduled as part of your consent agenda today, the new schedule for next year, January 10th is their first meeting. It will be held up in Tahoe. Right now, on that agenda is the Alpine Sierra subdivision, which, that's a 38-block planned residential development. So, that will be a trip up to Tahoe. Then, the second meeting in January, the 24th, is going to be here in Auburn. We hope to have the draft EIR meeting for the Placer Retirement Residences, that's a project down in Granite Bay. The release of that EIR is scheduled for December 20th, and that will be a 45-day public review. That also is going to be a full agenda on the 24th. Several other projects are getting teed up, so you can look forward to that as well. February 14th, the draft EIR meeting is scheduled for the Sunset Area Plan and Placer Ranch Specific Plan. That EIR will be released on December 18th, and that will be a 60, what turns out to be a 60-day public review period. My guess is that will probably be the only item on that agenda, as that will probably take up the entire time. And then, to the end of February, because I need to look out that far, we'll be back up in Tahoe. There's our couple of projects in Squaw Valley, and then also one in the basin that will be under your consideration. That's the start of your year. So, on a different note, and a good note, I do have a staffing announcement to make. Delaney Farnham, is Delaney here? All the way in the back. She was recently promoted to Assistant Planner with the Planning Services Division. Delaney started with the county just over a year ago, and has quickly proven her worth working the frontline as a community development technician at the agency's front counter. Delaney has both a bachelor's and master's in geography, and with a recent experience reviewing and processing land development applications, will be able to make an immediate contribution to our current planning team here in Auburn. So, congratulations to Delaney on her promotion, and we look forward to having her present before your commission. Commissioner Rokuchi, as we're making our way into 2019, you know, unfortunately, we'll be doing that without you moving forward with us. As you know, the Planning Commission seats are appointments by the Board of Supervisors, and we sometimes lose some very good commissioners when supervisory seats change. So, Commissioner, your term served on this commission is one of many chapters in your over 45 years of public service. You were appointed to this commission on January 11th, 2011, which is really when all of us were digging our way out of this great recession. So, there's a lot of meaning to that date of 1/11/11. It was kind of the beginning. So, after today, you have served, you know, about eight years on our planning commission. You served as Vice Chair in 2015 and Chairman in 2016, one of the most contentious years, but with great successes, being involved in the decision-making on some of the most forward-thinking planning efforts the county has seen, such as the Tahoe Basin Area Plan, Squaw Valley Specific Plan, amendments to the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan, the Bickford Ranch Specific Plan. Over your term, you're also influential in the Granite Bay Community Plan Update, Sheridan Plan Update, the Timberline Project right across the street here in Auburn, and countless others. Overall, it's been an absolute pleasure having you serve on the commission. You've been incredibly respectful to the public we serve, even when times were very contentious. You've also taken our staff to task, you know, asking the difficult questions, as you should, but are always polite in doing so. So, I thank you for that. So, lastly, before I open it up to, you know, other commissioners who may want to say something, I just want to personally thank you for, you know, your public service to the commission, you know, most of all, your professionalism and your friendship. So, thank you.
[Laughter]
So, unless there's questions, I may step aside, and then I'll let you, the commissioners, take it from here.
Any questions for EJ? All right, thank you, EJ, and thank you for that dedication to Richard. Well deserved, Richard.
I'd like to say a couple of words. First of all, it has been a pleasure, and these eight years goes by really quick. And I guess I, three of the commissioners are, were here when I came on, and the other three, and well, we have one missing today, but are new. So, I guess I'm sitting right in the middle of the seven-member commission as far as longevity, so that's a good spot to be. EJ said I was usually polite and everything, and that one year that I was chair, I think it must have been a plot by the other five commissioners, but we had those meetings with 400 people in the room up at Tahoe, and they were, they were important to those people. And of course, they get very emotional and stuff, but that was probably the least kind that I was at, at those meetings, but we got through them. But, no, it's a, it's a different, you know, game up here at the county level planning, but yet it's similar to Roseville. For some of you that may not know, I'm lifelong resident of Roseville. My wife just got recently elected to the Roseville City Council again, and I've been on the council down there off and on for 17 years on the Planning Commission. So, I had the experience, but you know, handling the county issues are a little bit different because we covered the whole county, and there's different issues with that, but it's still similar. So, I'm glad I was able to be appointed by Supervisor Jack Duran, who did not win reelection this time, and it's obviously, it's the option, the new supervisor will make the appointment. And I said I was available, but I wasn't chosen, I guess, but that's okay, too. I've been here eight years, and I kind of believe in term limits anyway. In Roseville, as, at a council level, we have an eight-year term, although you can sit out two years and run again, but, so, you know, I'm around, I'm not going anywhere. My wife and I have been married 49 years and are Roseville residents, so the heart of Placer County. I know the Auburn people think they're the heart of Placer County, but, but anyway, it's enjoyed meeting not only the people that were here when I got here, but also new people like Nathan here. And I, one thing I would like to just close with, when I first started on this, not that we disagreed, but Jeffrey Moss and I sometimes didn't see eye to eye on certain issues, and it got kind of scary the last year or two, but we actually agreed on most things. And we always kind of joked about it here at the meeting, but that was kind of nice, although we never had any adversarial. We have had some meetings where we have been questioning each other, not only staff or a person at the podium, but each other, which I think is healthy. I think we need people with diverse views and backgrounds, and I'm sure that the new appointee, and I haven't been told who it was, in fact, I just found out yesterday afternoon it wasn't going to be me, but I don't know who the new one will be. But I'm sure that person will fill, fill right in and be able to be trained by the other six and by staff to do the job that's required of them. And I do want to acknowledge staff have gone through a few changes even at staff level, but, and at the secretarial level here, but they've all been really professional in all their, all their activities. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. And I would almost echo everything that EJ said. I'm impressed with your dedication, and it takes dedication to be in this position. I mean, I think, if you have to wade through this for a meeting, and to do it right, you have to wade through that, you have to have a passion for this, and that passion is that you care about the community, and you just show that in every way. And I, since you brought up Tahoe, that was one of the more challenging years, is when you were chair, and you did a great job of helping us navigate through some very tough issues. I remember that, that one meeting, I believe it was on the Squaw Valley Expansion, started at 10 o'clock in the morning, and we finished at 8:30 at night. And it was a very tense meeting, so I appreciate that leadership and guidance that you've given, and I appreciate that you're an engineer by training, and so you gave that perspective, too, as we went through projects. So, I valued that. So, thank you for your commitment, and I'm so thankful that you're going to continue to be involved in the community and for all the involvement that you have over the years. So, I want to give others the opportunity to chat.
Richard, I'd take a minute and just tell you how much I've enjoyed serving with you here. I have appreciated our differences of opinion over the years. You keep me thinking. I think it's dangerous if, if we all sit up here and totally agree with each other on a regular basis. I think it's, it's differences of opinion that get us all thinking about things in a, in a different level of detail, and that's necessary for what we're reviewing. And I just keep it short and just tell you, I've really, really enjoyed and appreciate working with you. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad you're keeping such a high note, and I, I miss you. Never had one disagreement all these years.
Well, there was one, when I kept telling you to turn your cellphone off, and when you, do you have it off now, by the way?
I don't know. Can't hear it, so it must be off.
Oh, can't hear it, so it must be off.
Anyway, we wish you well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, same for me, Richard, the other Richard here. Two Richards on the commission. Now we just have one, huh? So, yeah, thank you for your service. It's been a great, great time.
I'll say, you know, thank you for, publicly, I, we shared some comments privately, but you've been a mentor to me in these few months that I've been a part of the commission, and appreciate your leadership and the stories. You know, we've got a lot of stories and appreciate those, and we'll continue friendship after this, so, thank you.
Say hello to your wife. Nice lady.
Thanks. I think she is. I know she is. Her birthday was yesterday, in fact. But I won't tell you how old she is. No, I didn't forget it.
And you're a good boy.
Thank you so much for those kind words.
You're very welcome, again, very deserving. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment, but before we do that, again, I want to, these are, if you wanted to talk to us about anything, you're welcome to do that. It's not on our agenda, and that we cannot take any action on it today because it is not on our agenda, so, and I would ask that you hold it to three minutes. There will be a timer that as long as it's green, you're good. When it goes down to yellow, you have one minute to wrap up, and then when it hits red, I'd ask you to end your comments. So, does anybody want to get up and speak on any issue that's not related to our agenda? And if you'd state your name when you come up.
Good morning. Jane Wurst.
Jane, could I ask you to, okay, there, now you're on.
There we go. My name is Jane Wurst, and I'm here as a concerned citizen and as a member of Protect Rural Placer. We have been extremely upset that the county would propose a large-scale urban recreation and commercial venue, the Hidden Falls Access and Expansion Project, right in the middle of a quiet, safe rural residential ag zone neighborhood in North Auburn. In an email on November 18th, Lisa Carnahan, the project manager, states, "It is important to note that we are not requesting a change in zoning for this project, as none is needed. Parks are an allowed use within a farm zoning with a minor use permit." So, I looked up residential ag zoning, Article 17.06, and yes, parks are allowed, but retail is very limited. The only allowed under retail trade is roadside stands for agricultural products. Outdoor commercial recreation is not allowed, and yet the Parks Division is proposing retail establishments to rent bikes and sell other concessions. When I looked up the minor use permit, Article 17.44, I was pleased to see this paragraph. Minor use permit approval is required for certain land uses that are generally consistent with the purposes of the zone, but could create problems for adjoining properties, the surrounding area, and their population if such uses are not designed to be compatible with surrounding land issues. The purpose of a minor use permit is to allow the planning department staff and zoning administrator to evaluate a proposed use to determine if problems may occur, to provide the public with an opportunity to review the proposed project and express their concerns in a public hearing. As you know, we have substantial concerns that this project will create problems for adjoining properties, the surrounding area, and their population. There are approximately 1,000 homes along the Bell, Kramer, Lone Star, Auburn Valley, Big Hill, Garden Bar, and Mears Roads, and all the offshoot roads. That amounts to thousands of residents that will be directly affected and endangered by the increase in traffic, which will be far greater than what is safe on these rural country roads, increase in wildland fires, which, as we painfully know, can move rapidly, consuming lives and hundreds of homes in just hours, and a dramatic increase in trespassing, loitering, vandalism, theft, and altercations with strangers that will be visiting the park and not staying within the trail system. The likelihood of the illegal camping by hikers and the homeless will significantly increase these risks. Did you know that crime has tripled in the Hidden Falls-Mears Drive area? It appears to be critical that the Parks Division Minor Use Permit application be made available to the public as soon as possible. May I come by your office and get a copy? Or could it be emailed to me? Thank you for your assistance and your careful consideration when this minor use permit comes up for your review. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. To come forward, please give your name.
Good morning, Mr. Chamber, Mr., Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Bart Rude, Kramer Road, Auburn. I'm an active member of Protect Rural Placer, and I want to go on record today as being in opposition to the Hidden Falls Regional Park Trail Expansion Proposal. I also want to go on record as being opposed to the $1.2 million purchase of the so-called Twilight Ride property at 5345 Bell Road, Auburn, and along with that, with the proposed installation of a parking lot at that site. I'm a farm boy. I'm very passionate and an advocate for agriculture, and I hope that each of you will be as passionate as those of us who have grown up and who call that neighborhood home. The expansion area has been a grazing area for livestock since the 1850s. It seems that agriculture was, and cow-calf operations were the number-one commodity in agriculture in Placer County in the year 2017, and that documentation is available with the Commissioner's Office, so you might be interested in taking a look at that. I wanted to go into a little bit about the value of grazing land, and I wanted to introduce you to some thought about animal units and how much a cow consumes and so forth, but since we're so limited in this opportunity to express ourselves, I would not be able to do that today. However, farmers are few in number, and when the farmer tries to speak, he's not exactly heard, or she is not exactly heard, because the cacophony made by the many who would rather have trails all over those some 4,500 acres in the area between Hidden Falls Park and the Bear River were drowned out. The cacophony of noise made by those other users, it should not be a deciding principle. The fact that agriculture is a very important aspect of business in this county should be what is considered first and perhaps last. And so, if we are to permit the expansion of trails, what is that going to do to the grazing opportunities for the ranchers in the area? I suspect that it will limit the grazing, and it will limit livelihoods. And I wonder myself, right now, whether or not, if livelihoods are deprived, is there a liability there that would be absorbed by everybody in the county of Placer who has touched this project? So, something to consider. And I would remind you, farmers are few in number, and they need to be recognized, and I thank you for your time today.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm Jean Piet. I live at 5395 Bell Road, which is very close to 5345 Bell Road, which is the Twilight Ride property. And I'd like you to know that we've been waiting and waiting, as all of, everyone has been, for the environmental impact report, and we're looking forward to having an opportunity to see that. But I also would like to mention that many of the people who are working on the future development of 5345 Bell Road have been moving rapidly in their planning, and I know that they're familiar with the first environmental impact report that came out, and are probably, since this is an addition to that, basing their movements on some of that. We've been actively opposing and expressing our concerns, as you've heard, regarding fire danger, increases in traffic, impact on agriculture and ranches, increased crime, and impact on the environment, which includes the urbanization of a rural community. We'd like to point our, our concerns at this time about pollution to land, air, noise, light, wildlife, and water. Focusing on water, we all understand that water is a primary need and demands attention when threatened. And when you consider a development such as what we have been talking about, water becomes even more of a concern. The subject is very broad and clearly addressed by many of the state and federal departments. Water rights, water resources, water quality, water use, water habitat, water stream systems, watershed protection, wetlands preservation and/or enhancement, wastewater and water pollution are only a few areas of concern. I'm sure you're all very familiar with all of this. Those of us who have been property owners are just now beginning to realize how what is being planned is going to impact all of these areas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
I am Jenny Barnes. I live at 5355 Bell Road, right next door to the entrance. We in that area just feel like you want this so bad that you're totally glossing over all of the negatives, the serious negatives, that's more so than positive. Please listen to what we're saying. First, it will take away people's livelihood with no, nowhere else to go. Most can't start over again. Cattle and horses don't mix, no matter what you say. Second, it will take away the pristine land around us. Wildlife will, will leave, no matter what you believe. Third, the traffic will be horrendous, not only during park hours, but before and after with the noise and traffic and parking. Fourth, we can count on a fire. There's no doubt there will be lives lost because there is no way to get out in time. Another paradise, my family will be suffering more than some because we live right next door to the entrance, and we're stuck because we're unable to move. We've lived there for 40 years. Leaving LA and all of its gangs and bullets hitting our house, Auburn residents do not want... want to live where we do for a reason. Auburn residents want to live where we do for a reason. We came here for the peace and quiet. No matter what you say, there will be vandalism, homeless people, fires, noise, no parking, no privacy. The parking will be in driveways and along the street. I don't care what you say, they will do it. Keep in mind that you just said you have to have a compassion for this community, so please show it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else want to address the commission on a non-agenda item? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment, and I'm going to ask the planning director if he has any comments on Hidden Falls' expansion.
Yeah, I can only share what I know. I mean, this is a project that is being processed by our Parks Division.
Are you on? Can people hear you?
My light's on. How about that? Is that better?
Yeah.
So I'll just restate what I said, but this is a project that is being processed by our Parks Division. They are currently going through the environmental review process as of this morning. The status on the EIR or a draft EIR being released, they're looking at early spring. So, just like any project with an entitlement, and it does require a use permit, you know, it would go through the standard hearing process with all the opportunities for public input, so I'm assuming that, you know, would start sometime next year.
Would that be coming before the commission, or is that going to be in another form?
I don't have an answer to that, but what I can tell you, the original Hidden Falls project, it was an EIR project, it did require a use permit, and the commission did make a recommendation on that to our board of supervisors. So, I would expect the same, but I don't have an answer for that.
Obviously, the SEQA laws are very specific and mandate that these kinds of processes be very transparent to the public with a significant opportunity to give input to the process, so I would suspect that that would happen, whatever the form is taken, that there's going to be lots of hearings on this before it gets finalized.
Correct, and similar to, you know, projects on the agenda today, and you know, there will be a draft EIR hearing or meeting, I should say, you know, where folks can comment on the document within that public review period.
Okay. Thank you. I've closed the public comment. What I would suggest is you talk to the planning director after the meeting, and I'm sure he'll be glad to help you on any questions you have. I'm going to move on to the consent agenda first, and I'm going to split it. We're going to have two items on the consent agenda, but we're going to vote separately on both those items, so I would ask that we address the agenda from the last meeting and that Mr. Severson was not here, so he will not be able to vote on this, but I would ask that any of the others like to forward a motion on the minutes for the last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the minutes from the last meeting attached in our report.
Thank you. And it's been movement seconded. It will call vote, with the exception of you.
Okay, I have a first by Mr. Moss and a second by Mr. Hersog. So, Mr. Hersog. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Okuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Severson.
Epstein.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now, the B portion of our consent agenda is our scheduled meetings for next year. Is there any questions on that, or just what's the pleasure of the commission on that?
Me too.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve that. Sue, roll call.
I have a first by Mr. Severson, and I believe the second was Mr. Moss.
Yeah.
Okay. So, Mr. Hersog.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Okuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Severson.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our 10:05 item, which was certainly way beyond 10:05. Mr. Purr Smith, and so get to hear about the Gladiant Eternal Preserve.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Christopher Schmidt, the Planning Services Division. Before you today is an application from Natural Passages LLC for a cemetery in rural Lincoln. We're not working.
There it goes.
The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow a cemetery in the Farm Zoning District. The project site is at the southeast corner of Gladiant Road and Fleming Road, north of Lincoln and south of Sheridan. Project site is 160.3 acres. As you can see, there are two drainages to the property converge at the western portion of the site before crossing Gladiant Road. Area zoning is all farmland. The project site is farm, minimum building site of 20 acre minimum. To the east or southeast is a little higher density, a 10 acres minimum. To the west is 20 acre minimum farm, and to the northwest is farm with mineral reserve designation. That is the Tigert site you see over here in the light blue. Just a few pictures of the site. It is used for cattle grazing. There's no structures on the property currently, grasslands, some oak woodlands. The riparian area or drainage area is a little greener than the rest of the site. Just a little bit of the grasslands with the drainage area beyond. And what you see here are the trails that are existing on site that will remain in place and used by the cemetery operation. So, the long-term plan for the project is 10,000 to 15,000 grave sites with 4,000 plots for cremains. Anticipated that cemetery will be in operation for 20 to 25 years. The applicant is required to get certification from the state and operating license from California Cemetery and Funeral Bureau, including the Business and Professional Professions Code, and also have to comply with Health and Safety Code as required by state law. The cemetery will establish a downments for long-term maintenance of the project site. And what's being proposed is a green cemetery, and the applicants can better explain what a green cemetery does, but their operation will be certified by the Green Burial Council. And what that means is when bodies are buried, they aren't put in anything that's not biodegradable. So, there's no metal caskets. The body is not embalmed using chemicals. It's often just enclosed in a cardboard box or a shroud, something that can biodegrade, and there's no vaults, so no cement put in the site. So, everything is natural, natural decomposition of the bodies. For the project site of 160 acres, 61 acres you see in red here will be used for interments, and the balance of the site will be conservation area, 99 acres. So, all the habitat on site will be avoided and preserved, and the property will be managed as a conservation area long-term. And so the first phase will be on the northern portion of the site, about half of the interment And this shows the resources on site, so a lot of wetlands in these drainage areas, vernal pools, all of this will be avoided. So, the interments are in the red, the resource areas are avoided by a minimum of 50 feet. So, there's even some cultural resources on site that they will be avoided also. The project will use the trail network that currently exists on site, so no new construction for trails. A little look at the project design, the applicants are doing a real light touch to the project site. They want to leave it as natural as possible. They will be installing some landscaping along Fleming Road, including a tree line and some fencing. A simple attractive project sign at the project entrance on Fleming Road. There's a paved parking lot, so unlike a traditional cemetery, you would drive in and park close to the grave site. Here you will drive in and park at parking lot at the entrance, and then you'll be either walk or be transported, if you're elderly or disabled, to the project site. So, a little different setup. They are proposing small offices in a restroom facility and also a maintenance building you see on the right there. There will be three miles of trails. They'll be publicly accessible from the trailhead, which would be the parking lot area. They'll be open from dawn to dusk. Two gazebo structures for visitors to the site, but also able to use our small services will be able to use these gazebo structures. This shows the project entrance, landscape parking lot, paved parking for 26 spaces and overflow parking for 27 spaces. I'll go back here. The project entrance will be gated to control security, so they'll keep it locked at night. Just a few details on the project, no lighting. There'll be no additional lighting on site except at the buildings, which will be motion-activated. Minimal grading, less than an acre to create the parking areas. Utilities will utilize well-inseptic. The applicant will have three people on site, three employees, hours of operation dawn to dusk. No grave markers, so unlike your traditional cemetery, there's no above-ground stonework. Everything is flush to the ground and even using natural rock, so not your typical cemetery. The applicant will be doing fuel load management to protect surrounding properties in case there's a fire. We did look at chip generation from a cemetery. The interment services will generate between 15 and 25 vehicles. Larger services, so someone who has a lot of family or friends, that will be held off-site, and it'll be a private ceremony at grave site for a smaller group. The burial services, two or three a day, will be staggered so they don't overlap, so they're not overload the parking lot. Peak memorial days, it's estimated, could generate between 150 and 200 vehicle trips per day, so it'd be Veterans Day, Father's Day, Mother's Day, et cetera. Site access at 26-foot-wide driveway off of Fleming Road. They'll be required to add acceleration and deceleration tapers at the entrance. They'll be doing intersection improvements at the corner of Gladiant and Fleming Road, not very substantial, a taper with a larger turning radius. Based on forecast volumes, a turn lane into the project site is not needed, and they'll be constructing an emergency vehicle access on the southern portion of the project site below that drainage for emergency vehicles. The project did go to the Rural Lincoln MAC on November 19th. There were some issues raised, whether the parking was adequate, what the plans were for continued grazing operations on the site, some issues about security and staffing, concerns about long-term maintenance of the site, and any impacts to neighbors from public trail use. In the end, the Rural Lincoln MAC did recommend approval by a four-to-one vote with one member absent. And with that, staff recommends you adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Eternal Preserve project and approve the conditional use permit for a cemetery in the Farm Zoning District, subject to the findings found in the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that may have.
Any questions for Christopher at this time? Like there isn't any? Thank you, Christopher. We'll ask the applicant if they would like to come up or applicant's representative give us a little bit more information.
Chairman Nader, members of the commission, good morning. George Phillips here on behalf of Natural Passages LLC. This morning here with me are Steve Morgan and Mark Heinz. They're principals in Natural Passages LLC, and also Wildlands is their company, so they have decades of experience of habitat conservation, thousands of acres they manage for habitat purposes throughout California and the western states, so they have a vast amount of experience in managing property. So, they're here this evening, this morning, to assist if we need to respond to any questions you might have. Also here is Casey Feigert, who's the civil engineer for the project, and then Chris Stewart that works with me is also here. As Chris laid out for you, this is a green or natural cemetery. There is not one in the local region. However, there are hundreds around the United States and the world, particularly in Canada and U.K. The generation of them in the United States has been really over the last 20 years. The oldest, one of the oldest in the country is actually in Marin County. And again, as Chris said, this is a natural process, utilizing no chemicals for embalming, no chemicals in the burial materials, no treated, chemically-treated coffins or shrouds would be used as well. So, this is a very natural process that would be followed. As Chris also mentioned, it just takes up a portion of this site, 61.3 of the 160 acres, and it would be managed, again, with the experience that the principals have in habitat preservation, sensitive to the natural features on site. The site would be grazed, as was also mentioned by Chris, primarily for redebatement and keeping fuel management control in check. There would be a trail system. There have been concerns expressed. You received a letter from one of the neighboring property owners relative to dogs and maintaining them on leashes. That is, we're fine to do that and commit to that, given the fact that there are rural properties adjacent to us and they would have grazing animals as well, and we want to make sure that there aren't any nuisance factors with that. But clearly, this, we think, this is a proposal that blends in very well with the rural atmosphere and surroundings of the site, and it's really a future trend on burials. And a lot of conventional cemeteries are now setting aside areas where they will conduct green burials in the conventional cemeteries. So, this is kind of a wave of the future, and we think it's very ecologically friendly. So, with that additional background, happy to answer any other questions you might have, and if I don't have the answer, someone on our team will.
Question at this time?
I think I read in there that there'll be a part of the cemetery for people that are cremated.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I guess just dig a hole with a shovel and put the ashes in it, or?
Well, I'm assuming that they would be, the ashes would be in an urn of some kind, a natural, some type of natural material, but the cremains would be placed in, I think, 18 inches by 18 inches approximately dimension and be placed in the ground. Chris's numbers in the staff report are 4,000 cremains we're anticipating and 10,000 to 15,000 conventional graves. Green burial graves.
With the other examples around the country, is farmland used? Is that where they're typically placed?
I think it varies in settings, not necessarily rural. There may be some in more urban settings, but I would think more rural, yes.
The Mansonita Cemetery is a very short distance away from this property. Our family plot has been there since the 1860s, so very familiar with that area. Any other question?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll give you the opportunity to come back up if there's some comments in the public. Okay, I'm going to open it up for anyone who would like to comment on this. Again, I would ask that you hold your comments to three minutes. So, would anybody like to step up? You'd state your name for us, please.
Good morning. My name is Pete Hazen, and I reside at 340 Fleming, a property adjacent to the proposed development. So, I'm just learning about this, and a primary question and concern relates to any potential contamination to groundwater or to soil and the impact to adjacent properties. I haven't heard anything about any environmental reports as to what the potential impact could be. I do understand that, you know, for green cemetery plots such as this, chemicals are not used for maldehyde and otherwise. Bodies, however, just from the marining I've done, do have mercury in them from fillings. They have medical devices such as pacemakers. They have other contaminants that are in the body that ultimately do and can find their way into groundwater. And so the question about what is the implication to, pardon me, to groundwater, as well as what is the implication to runoff? You know, this is a relatively low area, and I just want to understand if the studies have been done to understand what the impact would be to runoff of the water. Is there a plan as to how to direct that runoff, in what direction? And, you know, to what degree has thought been given as to what the contaminants And, you know, to what degree has thought been given as to what the contaminants may do in this area? So that's just primarily a set of questions that we have and concerns related to if there's any impact to adjacent properties.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
You want to address that, Chris, or the applicant?
First, as it relates to the drainage issues, the topography of the site is really not going to be affected but for the parking areas, and obviously, we need to abide by county requirements for drainage and managing that drainage, both from a water quality and rate of runoff. So other than those very small structures and areas of improvement to the 160 acres, the remaining topography is going to be maintained in a natural state. And as Chris also mentioned, the markers, if there are markers, are going to be reset or set in the ground at ground level. They're not going to be vertical. So we're really not affecting the drainage characteristics of the site in any way, and we are keeping, all the burial sites are out of the 100-year floodplain area as well. So from a water quality standpoint, I think through the customary requirements that the county imposes in terms of the environmental document here, which was a negative declaration, we'll abide by all those requirements, so I don't see a drainage issue. As it relates to the groundwater contamination, understand the concerns in terms of the thought about what may occur here. We have, through our research of investigating and proceeding forward with these proposals, we have a current, we have current proposals in Napa County, El Dorado County as well, and exploring one in Riverside County, as well as the research we've done on our end of things. We have found no evidence of groundwater contamination from the decomposition process. Understand the concern, though, but we have not found any evidence of that occurring in other locations.
Did you say there's been one in Marin County for some time?
Correct.
And so there's been no, that would give us some, at least, historical background as to whether there's been any issues related to it.
And it's the, its name is the Fernwood Eco Cemetery in Mill Valley, Marin County.
So again, I take it there's been no issues?
To our knowledge, no. We've looked at this issue.
Well, Jeff just asked if it was on a well, it's on a well, but you may not know that, whether...
The one in Marin County?
Don't know, don't know the answer to that question.
Any other questions on this issue? Okay, we'll see if there's any other public comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanted to address the commission on this issue? It seems none. I'm going to go ahead and close the public part of that and bring it back to the commission for action they would like to take, or questions, if you have further questions on it.
Just one question, I guess. The maintenance of the facility, is there going to be grass allowed to grow and be mowed, or is it going to be watered and maintained, or is it just going to be what's there is there?
It's literally going to be maintained the way it is today. It's grazed, and that would be the continuing practice. So again, this is new in terms of people's thoughts or perspectives about a cemetery. The formal maintenance and turf areas and mowing is not going to be the predominant management method here. It's going to be left in a natural state. So that's why the grazing will still be the active management of the site. And again, the owners, coming from that background in managing habitat locations and managing grazing of those sites, it's going to be the same approach here.
It would seem, though, that as the bodies deteriorate in time, that you would have the sinking of the grave site. Is that going to be refilled or just left to go?
It is, and that's mentioned in the staff report, where the commitment is to refill those areas to make sure there's no ponding at those locations.
And there won't be any headstones, so you won't even know where they are unless you want to go find your loved one. You have to use a GPS to find them.
Correct. And again, there may be a marker at that location, but it would be reset in the ground facing up.
Do you have any questions, Jeff? Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher, for putting that up. What's the, again, the pleasure of the commission.
A move that we adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring and reporting program for the gliding preserve project based on the findings set forth in Attachment E and supported by the following findings that are listed here, A through E.
Okay, it's moving at second to the senior role, Paul.
I have a first by Commissioner Rokucci and a second by Commissioner Sevison. Mr. Herschel?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
A further move that we approve the conditional use permit for a cemetery in the farm zoning district to allow cemetery and farm F zoning districts supported by the following findings in there, A through F in our staff report.
Second. Moving at second to?
I have a first by Mr. Rokucci, a second by Mr. Herschel. Mr. Herschel?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes this. Thank you, everybody, for that. And we'll move on to our 1020 item, White Hawk One and Two. And again, I want to preface that if you want to speak on this item, when the public comment period comes, would ask that you sign up first, and if you could print, that would be helpful for us, and your contact information, so we can follow up with you. Sign-up sheets are over on this wall, on this table over here. So, there you go. So, all yours, Christopher.
Good morning again. Chris Schmidt with the Planning Services Division. The item before you today is a public hearing on the draft environmental impact report for the White Hawk One and Two projects in Granite Bay. SEQA guidelines do contain some standards for public hearings that are not required. We are not required to have a public hearing on environmental documents. We are encouraged to, and it's county policy, to hold public hearings on all the IR projects being reviewed by the planning commission and also the board of supervisors. The planning commission will be making a recommendation to the board of supervisors for consideration of the final EIR and required entitlements at a later date. So as the chairman had mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we are here to accept public comment on the environmental document and not on the project merits itself. So notice of today's public meeting or public hearing was given to property owners within 300 feet of the project boundaries, that's a total of 48 owners. Anyone who commented on the notice of preparation that was released at the beginning of the process were notified of today's meeting. We've put a copy of the document in the Granite Bay Public Library here at SEDRA offices and also county clerk's offices. We provided notice to the Granite Bay MAC of today's hearing. Legal notice was placed in the Sacramento B. We notify state, federal, local agencies, and also county staff of today's hearing. So there's two project sites, there are two projects, separate owners, one applicant, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, both are on the south side of Douglas, east of Wood Grove Way and south of Sino. White Hawk One is a smaller project, 18.09 acres. It's on the west. The larger White Hawk Two project is 32.97 acres on the east. Just to look at the project sites, if you're familiar with Douglas Boulevard, as you're entering Granite Bay, the project sites are on the right-hand side, very scenic oak woodland up stretch once you pass Wood Grove Way. And the other picture is typical of the project site internally. Strepp Ravine bisects both sites, also scattered woodlands, but also heavily mined in the past, so it's a lot of mine tailings and very topography. The project history, a couple of years ago, both of these projects were heading towards the commission. We released mitigated negative declarations for each. We received a whole bunch of comments. Many of the comments requested an EIR calling these not separate projects, they should be analyzed together. We also had some issues pop out about traffic that caused the county some concern, and also significant issues raised by the State Department of Fish and Wildlife that we needed to address. So the decision was made to do an EIR to analyze both projects in one environmental document. So in the EIR that you see today, it has the following analytical scenarios. If White Hawk One only proceeds on its own, if White Hawk Two proceeds on its own, and if both proceed concurrently. So this approach is intended to provide the community, planning commission, board supervisors enough information to make separate decisions on each project. And this approach has been proven to be wise because the project applicant, Meritash Holmes, has decided against moving forward with White Hawk One project but is still pursuing White Hawk Two. So when we come back to you next, in the spring, we'll be bringing forward entitlements for White Hawk Two, not for White Hawk One. The White Hawk One property owners will be at liberty to bring forward the White Hawk One project at a later date, either the owners or a developer who puts the project, or the project site, under contract. So I'll just give you a short project description, not all the details of what's being proposed. Two years ago, this is a layout that was, Meritash was proposing. The units would basically be condominiums with HOA maintained property on all sides besides a exclusive use patio. So mostly HOA maintained, the owner would have a backyard patio. That approach was changed to what you see today. The homeowner now gets a small lot that they'll be responsible to maintain. So that's the only change between 2016 and today, besides a more thorough environmental analysis. So White Hawk One, the smaller of the two on the west, 24 units with lot sizes a little over 9,000 square feet to a little over 16,000 square feet. Required 300-foot residential setback on the south side of Douglas is maintained, so you see that here in the green. This will be common area. There'll also be restricted open space, also common area. This is Strepp Ravine that comes through here. There'll be a small private park of one-third of an acre. And a half-mile public trail connecting to the Greyhawks subdivision to the west, up and out to Douglas Boulevard. In all, 54% of the project site would remain undeveloped as open space and common area lots. Larger of the two has 55 units, similar lot sizes, 9,000 square feet to 14,501 square Maintains that 300-foot setback along Douglas Boulevard. Forgot to mention that both projects will be gated, which is allowed in the Granite Bay Community Plan. So we'll have gated features here that are in the 300-foot setback. Strepp Ravine here does this on the northern portion of the site. So 3.8 acres of common area, private park of a little under an acre, restricted open space of 10.8 acres, that's basically your wetlands of the stream corridor. A public trail of a half-mile, which dead ends here, there's an undeveloped, or a piece in between the two sites that is privately owned. This connection is for future development, if ever, of that site eventually, a roads and/or trail would connect to the White Hawk One project site. And on this, this property, 47% open space. There's a bunch of off-site work that's been analyzed in the EIR. The applicant would need to extend water and sewer from Wood Grove Way east to both project sites. An EVA from White Hawk Two out to Court Site Circle. The turn lane at the project entrance of White Hawk Two, so the eastbound Douglas, or westbound Douglas turn lane, left turn pocket, would need to be extended a little bit at the existing signal. The applicant would need to add the signal facing the project site as part of their project. So right now, lights are on three legs of this intersection. This would be the fourth intersection they'd add the light. And then changes the Wood Grove Way-Douglas Boulevard intersection. And we saw this at the Habad of Roseville project you reviewed in November, that this intersection would be restricted so cars cannot turn left from Wood Grove onto Douglas. Southbound cars on Quail Oaks cannot turn right onto Douglas. So either the Habad project or one of the White Hawk projects would need to construct this intersection change. And then also, the second of the White Hawk Two projects would be required as mitigation to expand Douglas Boulevard near Sierra College from four to six lanes. And this kind of shows you what that looks like. It's hard to see here. It'll be six lanes to Cabot Stallman South, and then this northernmost lane here would taper down past Cabot Stallman. Today, this goes from three lanes in Roseville down to two, and there's been traffic backing up over here. This would mitigate that problem, let cars head further into Granite Bay before it tapers down to relieve the backup over here. There is adequate right-of-way for that improvement. Most of the expansion would happen on the north side of the road, because on the south side, Quail, the Sierra Commons subdivision, or Commercial Plaza, is really close to the right-of-way. So expansion would happen to the north. I'm not going to get into a lot of details of the entitlements for both projects, but both of them require a general plan amendment and a community plan amendment to change the land use designation, a rezoning to change the PD designation on White Hawk One for a little higher density. And the 300-foot setback area on both projects would be rezoned to open space to permanently protect them from development. Best intended subdivision maps, a conditional use permit to construct a planned residential development that county ordinance requires, and also a variance lock coverage to allow up to 50% coverage for single-story residents where 25% to 40% is normally allowed. So all the homes in both projects will be restricted to single-story only. And similar list of entitlements for White Hawk Two. So the timeline for the environmental document, the NOP, was published earlier this year, January 26th. We had a public comment period from January 26th through February 26th. We had a public scoping meeting at the Granite Bay Library on February 13th. And the environmental document you're considering today was released for public review on November 30th. So a whole bunch of impact areas were analyzed in the draft EIR. All of those have mitigation measures, except these three here, land use and agricultural resources, public services and recreation, and utilities and service systems do not require any mitigation, so there's no significant impacts in those resource areas. There are a few significant unavoidable impacts. Air quality for the combined projects would be a significant unavoidable impact related to short-term emission of criteria pollutants. And then the rest of the significant unavoidable are all traffic-related. So the roadway segments from Douglas Boulevard south along Sierra College Boulevard to Renaissance Creek are impacted, but there's not mitigation available to fix that. And also from Douglas, from Sierra College all the way to Sino Avenue. So we can fix up to Cabot Stallman South, that goes to six lanes, but from Cabot Stallman South to Sino, the community does not want that to be six lanes. It'll stay for the impacts significant unavoidable. So what you'll see, that is existing plus White Hawk Two, existing plus White Hawk One and Two, all have those road impacts. We did look at alternatives as required under SEQA. There was the no-project-no-build alternative. So the no-project does not mean the project's site is never developed, it's just there's no project permitted or approved as part of this entitlement process. There's also the existing zoning alternative, what the project sites could look like under existing zoning, and then a reduced-density alternative was looked at. So build-out pursuant to existing zoning would give you eight lots on the White Hawk One site and 10 lots on White Hawk Two. Reduced-density alternative, there was analyzed, 16 lots on White Hawk One and 38 lots on White Hawk Two. Similar footprints to impacts and very similar impacts to environmental resources. We are required to identify an environmentally superior alternative. No-project alternative doesn't meet any of the project objectives, so it was dismissed. The alternative for build-out to existing zoning also doesn't meet project objectives, and it's also the same, potentially the same outcome as a no-project alternative. So that was also dismissed. So neither the no-project or no-build alternative nor build-out pursuant to existing community plan alternative were selected as environmentally superior. So the reduced-density alternative was chosen as an environmentally superior alternative to the proposed project. So we do have several opportunities for public input. We have input today at the hearing. A comment period for the draft EIR ends on January 14th, 2019, so public... A comment period for the draft EIR ends on January 14th, 2019, so applicants may comment through then. Anyone who submits a comment or speaks today will get a formal response to the comments and a copy of the final EIR. Schedule for the White Hawk Two entitlements, Granite Bay MAC meeting late winter, so looking at probably late February, early March, planning commission after that, and then board of supervisors because of land use change and the rezonings. And with that, I'd have to open it up for public comment.
Any questions for Christopher, before he steps down? Right, thank you, Chris. Oh, you have one. Go ahead, Rich.
Let me see, I guess it's phase one. Is there an EVA there?
There is an EVA down here at the northwest corner of the site. There's a sewer easement that runs like this. So there's a sewer easement that goes through Greyhawk One and also an existing trail that stops here in the Greyhawk One subdivision. So this is gated today. This will be an EVA for White Hawk One. Then you can see the EVA for White Hawk Two out to Court Site over here.
Okay, and you mentioned that gated communities are permitted in the Granite Bay plan?
They're strict, they're standard set for gated communities. And one of those is located along a major arterial, so Douglas Boulevard qualifies for gates. The projects along Douglas do, are allowed to propose gates.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Nate.
White Hawk Two, units five and six, the access to those two dwellings, is that a driveway?
It's a sheer driveway over drainage, so there'll be a small culvert to keep this free-flowing, but it's a sheer driveway.
So you have to, you have to turn left around unit seven and then come around a driveway, an extended driveway over that? Cool, okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Christopher. As Christopher mentioned, we have until, our, the public has until January 14th to put in written comments, either emails or letters. And I would certainly highly encourage any of you who would like to give input to this, especially, again, we're addressing more the technical issues that relate to this. And so if you want to speak today, again, we have a recorder in the back who is taking down every word that you say. And, and you will be responded to, as Christopher said, and you will, any comments that you make will be incorporated into the final EIR. So I'm going to open this up, but we do have a list. So Kara, do you have that list now, or does EJ have it? Because we'll want to call.
So we have, we have a list with six individuals right now. Kara has that list. We'll probably call up three at a time, and then after that, we can ask if there's anybody else that would like to comment.
Okay, then we'll, we can go forward on that.
Okay. First three names, Jeff Caravelli, Bill Peterson, and Philip Shotbell.
And even though she said your name, if you'd restate it again, and I would ask you to hold your comments to three minutes, please.
Well, good morning and thank you. My name's Jeff Caravelli. I have a statement to read on behalf of the Strapp Ravine Estates Property Owners Association.
Jeff, I apologize. Just a quick interruption. The chair noted that the court reporter would be taking everything down. We don't have a court reporter here, but the planning consultants will be taking down your information.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sorry. I thought there was one.
So again, Jeff Caravelli, I have a statement from the Strapp Ravine Estates Property Owners Association. Strapp Ravine Estates is a subdivision governed by CCNR directly to the southeast of proposed White Hawk Two. Several member parcels will share a common property line with the proposed development. The association has become aware of a proposed EVA route described throughout the draft EIR, most covering on pages 319 and 321. The EVA is proposed to be a 20-foot-wide, 500-foot-long access road on the east side of White Hawk Two, south of Lot 45, extending within a 25-foot-wide easement, meandering generally southeast through a member parcel within the association and terminating on Court Site Circle, which is a privately maintained public road supported by annual assessments levied on association members. This EVA is unchanged throughout the Chapter 18 discussion of alternatives. We have several concerns relating to this proposal, including maintenance impacts to Court Site, which is the financial responsibility of the association, and the possibility that the EVA may become an attractive nuisance to increase pedestrian and other non-motorized through traffic or unauthorized use of a neighboring vacant member parcel directly to the south of the member parcel in question. Most importantly, however, we believe that the draft EIR incorrectly states that, quote, "The proposed EVA route will not conflict with any land use restrictions," end quote, because the underlying easement and the proposed EVA are inconsistent with the CCNRs that bind the member parcel and other association members. Specifically, there are restrictions that say, quote, "And no portion of said property shall be used for any purpose other than for single-family dwelling purposes, and also no form of business, commercial, manufacturing, or storage enterprise activity shall be conducted or maintained in this subdivision." These are enforceable land use restrictions. An access road through a member's parcel to a third-party property is not consistent with the concept of single-family dwelling purposes, and an easement sold for monetary gain is a prohibited commercial activity. The association has not been approached for permission by either the member parcel in question or the applicant and believes that the EVA is therefore contrary to our CCNRs. We are researching enforcement options and will submit a written comment by the deadline. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Bill Peterson. I've lived on Court Site Circle since 91, 92. And Devon Ringer that supposedly is allowing this road to go through, when I did remodeling and stuff, he was very strict, always in my face, on my property, even to build a fence. I had to have it approved, I had to have the tiles approved. It was all, all the stuff was a lot better usage. And so Devon was very strict with that. And why this, all of a sudden, he's now selling this? People, recently, last couple of years, I've heard that this is a public road. CCNRs talked about our common area, and the roads are common area. And I don't think that the county really has that, nor do they want the responsibility. Our road sucks. I mean, if somebody gets hurt on a bike, we're, we're could be in big trouble. And so, you know, I just, Devon, for some reason, it's got to be a monetary thing that he's done, he's sold that, and he sold, he basically sold out all the rest of the homeowners. And I've talked to other people that have had one time, you know, emergency vehicle access only ends up turning into a road. And I was at the MAC meeting a week or two ago there at Eureka, and they're talking about traffic is a huge problem, which it is. Over the last 20-some years, it's really changed out in the Granite Bay area. And this is only going to greatly increase this, and they're going to be looking for other ways to get out of, off of Douglas. Douglas is crazy already, and so as soon as possible, they're going to prob, and I've heard that emergency vehicles have, roads have become public roads. And I, I still believe that the common area, those roads are our common area. That's the only common area I've seen since I lived there since 91. And I just think this, they've got to do something else, either lower, lower the amount. Elliot Holmes bought that park golf course, they're at two acres. We're at two, three, three to 10 acres. And now they're, you're going high-density housing, which is just not, it's good for the developers, but not good for the people that have invested their money there and lived in Placer County. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kara, who's next?
Philip Shotbell, Chris Anderson, and Sandy Harris.
All right, if you could step forward. Again, if you could state your name.
I'll pass you on.
Thank you.
Good morning, Sandy Harris, 5911 Reba Drive, Granite Bay. I haven't had time to get through, as you say, this document. When I saw it at the library, I thought, I need a wagon to carry that thing out of here. I've gone through a little bit of it, and I'm kind of disturbed because they keep referring to it as a mixed residential opportunity area that was in our community plan, and that is a total misconception. It's made throughout the DEIR, and the Granite Bay Community Plan states, however, "Commercial sites along Douglas Boulevard and Auburn Folsom Road. Corridors may provide an opportunity to create such a center of redevelopment with a range of housing, commercial and/or employment. Aging commercial sites." In other words, when we were doing that community plan, we talked about existing commercial sites, maybe some down the road if they're redeveloped to put lofts above them or something like that. That's a mixed use. This is not a mixed use. It's totally a housing development. Another comment, I'm not sure where that connecting road goes through from White Hawk One to Two. I can see it on White Hawk Two, but I don't see it on White Hawk One. And I don't know why they need to increase the density to 50% coverage. They could lower the size of the houses. They're, they're stating that these are stepped-down houses from people who have bigger houses and want smaller, but they're still, they're 3,000 square feet. For some of us, that's stepping up. So I think it could solve the problem of a big house on a smaller lot by just making a smaller house on a small lot. And they're claiming it to be a PD, and yet they're cramming all this in there and getting all kinds of bonuses to do that. And they're talking about not providing affordable housing. And this commission, a couple of weeks ago, supported tiny houses on wheels that could be crammed into my existing neighborhood that doesn't have gates and CCNRs to prevent this type of building. But this developer, the county has an ordinance that says you should allow 10% affordable housing in your development. And they can pay an in-lu fee and not do that. So why don't they have to share the burden that the county says that we have to provide affordable housing? And you're mandating these things in my developed neighborhood, and you're going to let a new development come in here with gates and big houses and not have any affordable housing? And I would suggest that some of those lots that are along these bottom southern portion, where they're backing up to five-acre, two-acre, three-acre lots, that maybe you put smaller houses there than, than bigger lots, and those smaller houses could provide some affordable housing for maybe seniors on fixed incomes or for some seniors who don't want 3,000 square feet. Just a suggestion.
And since you commented that you haven't had a chance to maybe wade through all of that, just encourage you to, because you have a month now until all the inputs for this. So certainly would suggest that you continue to review it and give input as you see things that concern you. So please step forward.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Chris Anderson. I'm a 34-year resident of Granite Bay, 6835 Country Court, Granite Bay, right next to Linda Creek. Well aware of some of the drainage issues that we were talking about. However, today, I want to address one of the other issues that has to be addressed for housing in California. Two days ago, the Director of CAL FIRE, Ken Pimlet, made some statements, very interesting statements. I'll give you a little bit of my history. I'm a 37-year veteran of the California Department of Housing. I retired four years ago as the Chief of Field Operations. Basically, I was the building official for residential construction standards in the state of California. In that capacity, I spent 15 years dealing with all state and local agencies in disaster recovery. I found Ken's comments very on point with this issue. One of the things he said is, "California's increasingly deadly and destructive wildfires have become so unpredictable that government officials should consider banning home construction in vulnerable areas." Gentlemen, this is a woo-woo area, wildland interface, urban interface area. When you look at Google Maps and you take South Placer County, which I kind of printed out real quick, it's, it's difficult to see, we're talking about this area right here. This coming down from Auburn is all wildland. If we had a fire that started, and God knows, if we had those 45, 50, 60 mile-an-hour north winds, my house would go if anything started up here. This area here would go. The embers are advanced a mile, two miles ahead of the flames, creating a, a very hot environment with little spot fires all over. Then all of the sudden, you get an 80-foot wall of flame. Anything in its path, as we just saw in Paradise, as we saw last year over in the Bay Area in Santa Rosa, as we saw the year before in Lake County and Calaveras County, and we've seen in, in San Diego and that whole area. Gentlemen, we have to consider other alternatives for our housing. I'm not a nimby. I want housing in South Placer County, and I know my three minutes is up, and I thank you for this, allowing me to speak my mind on this one, as it has to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Kara, who's next?
John Milbury.
Good morning. My name is John Milburn. I live in the Strapp Ravine area. I live right in Court, on Court Site as well. I wanted to just make three points. In a short amount of time, I did take a look at the draft EIR. I noticed, I want to make three points. If you look at the map, I'm going to do them in different order. It's not mentioned in the EIR, but it's certainly contemplated that the undeveloped land between White Hawk One and White Hawk Two will eventually be developed. They've even provided pathways for future connections. In my mind, an EIR should think about the possibility that that area is going to be developed, and it's going to be considered an infill site, and it's going to be automatically, well, we got houses on the north and the south, and it's at this density. Who's going to argue that they can't duplicate that same amount of density in that future, in some future date? I heard it also mentioned that the traffic, they're, they're going to put off, I think, the development of White Hawk One and focus on White Hawk Two. If I misunderstood, I can, I stand corrected. But then I, I heard about the, one of the mitigations on the traffic is to widen Douglas to somehow alleviate the traffic issues on Douglas. But it's not going to really be implemented until the second part of whichever phase they end up going with is done. My, my recommendation would be, it sounds like they're focusing more on White Hawk Two, and that White Hawk Two project's twice the size of White Hawk One. Those traffic mitigations and widening at Douglas and Sierra College should be considered as part of a requirement for the, whichever phase is built first. Third, third point I'd just quickly like to make, as I live in Court Site, those, the smallest lot in Court Site is a three-acre sites. They're all three-acre to five-acre sites. And there's a setback that we have to keep our sites, our properties rural in nature. The rear property lawn setbacks are 50 feet, the side yard setbacks are 30 feet. In, in this proposal, what I read in the draft EIR is that the setbacks are proposed to be 20 feet. I would be comfortable if the setbacks, or more comfortable if the setbacks on these properties, particularly on the southern portion of the White Hawk Two, be increased, the setback be increased. I was really familiar with the project as it was proposed earlier last year, where it was this condominium idea. Now they're actually separate parcels, and I think the increase in setback would help to at least get these homes a little bit further back from properties that are already 50, there's a 50-foot setbacks right now on our properties. And the properties around, surround us, we have much larger properties. It gives us sense of a more rural. It gives a sense of a more rural, undeveloped nature. My last point is about parking. You know, I'm an architect and I've seen proper projects where they kind of blow off the parking requirements. In this particular, I'm more focused on White Hawk 2. I didn't see where they, where they were comparing the required amount of parking for development of this size versus what they're actually proposing, but clearly there's not enough parking. The streets are too narrow to allow for parking on the street. So they have these little pockets of, of parking. 20% of White Hawk 2 doesn't have any off-site parking. In other words, the lots 45 to 55, 11 lots, that's 20% of the project, there's no parking. I think the parking is a problem in this, in this property. People have visitors and there's no place for them to park. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Kara, is there anybody else? Is that it? Did anyone miss the list and would like to speak? I don't see anybody getting up, so I'll close the public comment on this and just bring it back to make sure that the commission doesn't have some things that they would like to ask related to it.
Well, I'd just like to ask one question that was brought up, this business between the EBA and the CCNRs. Maybe our staff attorney can address that. That's a different ownership, the way I understand it, and they would have to get either permission or purchase an easement or something. You just can't arbitrarily put an EBA on a, on a drawing and say it's going to work. I mean, how's that going to work, I guess? And should that be addressed, I guess, in the DEIR? I mean, I'm asking it as an DEIR problem.
So in short, it's something we'd have to look into more. And I don't know the answer to right off. The, the DEIR would certainly need to look at emergency vehicle access, and you would have to look at the property rights for that emergency vehicle access as part of the project approvals.
I guess, yeah, okay. Does it have to be addressed in the, at least in the final DEIR? Not the draft? Well, it isn't addressed in the draft, so it'll have to be in the final one.
The, the emergency vehicle access portion does need to be addressed as, if it is alleviating one of the impacts. The property ownership interests themselves, that may not be in the DEIR, but would need to be addressed as part of the project approvals.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Christopher has put the contact from here in writing her email. We'd encourage anybody who did not make comments today or wasn't able to make the meeting that they, if they would like to weigh in on this, that they do that in the next month. So thank you all for participating, and we'll move on to our next item. And, but, no, go ahead. I was just going to say, I think I'm going to call for a five-minute break before we start our next item.
So I'll be presenting this morning about the Placer County Government Center Master Plan Update, and I'll be sharing that presentation with Paul Breckenridge from our Facilities So this is similar to what you, the last item you went through, but the secret guidelines encourages counties to hold public hearings on environmental documents. And it's also county policy for the Planning Commission to hold public hearings on all EIRs for projects being reviewed by the commission. And just a reminder that this hearing is to review and collect comments on the adequacy of the draft DEIR, not on the merits of the project itself. So the public review period began November 19th, and the notice of availability went out to 155 property owners within 300 feet of the project. Also, it went out to anybody who commented on the notice of preparation and to local, state, and federal agencies, as well as the North Auburn Municipal Advisory Council and county staff. And I'm going to hand it over to Paul to present an overview of the project itself, and then I'll come back and talk about the entitlements and the draft DEIR.
Thanks, Emily. Good morning. Paul Breckenridge, Senior Architect with Capital Improvements. And so walking you through the project description, the project itself, give you kind of a quick vicinity. So the 200 acres that make up the Government Center, which we are currently at here with this building, is, as you know, very familiar with 49 here, Bell Road to the north and Atwood to the south, and the 200 acres stretching westerly down Atwood there. Mid-county, as far as its overall location. Zooming in, so the existing conditions, this is the full 200 acres, the outline, again, same orientation, and you'll see that as I go through my slides, that the orientation is similar as you look at the various plans. So we're covering, as far as the master plan itself, we're covering the full 200 acres outside of the Home Depot site. So the, the master plan, guidelines, standards, the direction, the vision, all of that covers the 200 acres that we have at the campus here outside of the Home Depot. The only thing we don't have here on the plan is the Animal Services Center, which is incorporated. And I just wanted to say that out of the 93 plan, which we've talked about, we call this an update, it's an update, we feel out of the 1993 comprehensive facilities plan, a lot of the buildings that are currently here and the layout and the approach came out of that plan. So in our minds, we're continuing a lot of those themes and ideas that I'll talk about here momentarily. So the project description itself, it is our 2025-year look into the future for development here at the PCGC. So as we look at all things roadway, all the improvements that go along with existing and future conditions, we're looking at a 2025-year timeframe. Just talked about the update to the comprehensive facilities master plan, and that also looked at relocation. So things like moving the uses, say at Full Wyler, up to the PCGC campus, those things were looked at at that point. And I think the last thing that, as far as facilities that did not get finished out as part of the last master plan was the HHS facility. So that was covered and looked at as a new building in that plan, and we're looking at it now as kind of our starting point for the next 25 years here at the campus. Phase development, obviously with a myriad of things that we need to do here at the campus. The land uses in particular, that is, we've come up with the vision, this is how the land uses are going to be developed over time. Circulation planning has been a big thing. I'll talk a little bit about more of that here in a minute. And then future facilities, keeping the existing, remodeling the existing, and adding new based on our county needs. Utility drainage infrastructure, that's, that's a big thing, because we still have some amount of World War II infrastructure here at the campus that we struggle with. And then the last item there is just, as we got into the DEIR process, the board gave us direction to move ahead with a much closer detailed analysis of a new HHS building and a new multifamily residential building. So those are the two, if we look at the master plan as the program level DEIR, the two, project level are those two facilities. And I'll show you where those are, are planned to be located here in a moment. So as we look at the, kind of the part one of the master plan update itself, this was the, the analysis portion. So as we worked with our consultants, a wide range of consultants, stakeholders, the county, looked at all the things that kind of applied and looked at, assessed, you know, what are those things that we need and how do we need to implement those here at the Government Center? So looking again at those various pieces, facilities, utilities, looking at the county policy and how do we take that policy and push it forward into the documentation? And then looking at what are our opportunities and the constraints? What are the frame, what's the framework for developing the project into the future with the things that we do have? Kind of trying to utilize as much as we have now and using that as the framework into the future? And then a lot of time spent over the last couple of years talking to our various departments, divisions, and even our county employees as they use this campus into the future, figuring out where we need to go with the various components, whether it's the facilities or trails here, that that was one of the bigger things that came out of the surveying, is our employees would like to get out and walk. And so we've looked pretty extensively just the trail network, both to the campus, through the campus, and then various locations beyond. And economic and sustainability assessment. So we have one particular consultant that came in, did a lot of work to look at as things get more from a code perspective and from where we're going with the current sustainability initiatives here at the county, where do we take and implement those in the master plan with our facilities and our water use and energy use here at the campus? So then part two became that vision. So as we took the assessments, here are the needs, this is what we need to utilize, this is the space we need moving ahead, how do we incorporate that onto the campus? And so that's what we looked at next. The potential growth, relocation of services, we talked about, and then modifications with the various systems on campus. We've got PCWA, NID here on campus, so wrangling all those, those folks, just in particular is one example. And then looked at tiering the improvements. So we've got a tiering plan, implementation plan, that looks at five-year steps to lay out or roll out, if you will, roadways and then facilities and other things on the plan So the framework is, before I jump into the actual campus plan, we came up with nine thematic areas. And these areas became kind of the organizing elements for the campus that really wrapped around the central piece, this community green. So if we look at government uses to the west, the central green that becomes the unifying element, and then the areas that are to the east, meaning being mixed-use residential, more commercial, obviously, as it's related to Highway 49, and then even a Duett Heritage area here. So looking at utilizing the chapel and four hospital ward wings to kind of preserve, if you will, so that, you know, we've got a sense of where if you will, so that, you know, we've got a sense of where the campus has been and is, you know, and, you know, we've utilized those. And architecturally, the chapel is one of those higher on the list from its kind of its iconic presence, if you will. The actual campus plan, this is again the same orientation with Bell to the north, Atwood to the south. Some of the bigger ideas on the layout of the plan, Richardson, and First still be are the north-south connectors. The central green is at the heart of the campus, and as you know, right outside here is the little County Center Drive that kind of just pushes into the campus. We've taken that in the master plan and pulled that into the campus down to First in front of that community green. Along with that community green, we've got a community center that, so we consider this the community area of the campus, and then to the west of that, we've got new facilities that front that community green, the heritage area, and then the golden rod and the other colors here become the mixed-use and potentially even a hotel component at the end of that. Zooming in a little bit closer, so County Center Drive becomes our main gateway to the campus. We've got the building that we currently are at here, so kind of bookending that entrance, we're looking at potentially a county administration building just across the street here, that becomes the gateway into the campus into the future. Driving down County Center Drive, then we have frontages that represent, or buildings that front the community green, the HHS building designated as A, expansion of the Fab Building, which is the I and J designation, and then C, which is the farm and ag advisor location. Those are more of an urban approach to that green, fronting that and providing a strong edge condition to frame that central piece, if you will. And then further down, we've got these components down here around the existing turn circle. Here's Home Depot. These become two- and three-story mixed-use elements with potentially retail on the ground floor and residential units above. So the first of the project-level components of the EIR has to do with HHS, so just a little bit of information on that, six-acre site. So here's the site here. This is County Center Drive coming down from Bell. This is the Fab and the Fab extension into the future, expansion into the future, AJC across the street. So we've got the three kind of centers working together as we progress the project. 135,000 square feet, three stories maximum height, and that basically brings together our Auburn area service, HHS service area, and the admin folks that are here at CDRC, they would be relocated to the new building. The next project that we looked at at a greater level was the, is a multifamily workforce housing project on First, so again, just across on what would be the other side of the county admin center. First Street is here, we're looking at a realignment that pulls First from the current alignment here over to allow for some space for the future county admin center. That allows three acres on First for what would be up to 100 units, two-to-three-story buildings, in the, kind of just off to the side of the core of the campus, and kind of the start of what would be the implementation of housing on the campus here. So proposed zoning, existing, the existing zoning has us at, most of the government area is office professional, so the OP designation, heavy commercial, the C3 designation, and then the CPD to the east on this side existing currently, and then we've got a small portion that's medium-density residential. The proposed zoning, which you see here, has to do with the expansion of the C3, which is here, you can see the label. So this central area, mainly for county government purposes, pushes up into what was that office professional area, which captures what would be that future county admin building. And we've taken the CPD designation, the commercial plan development area, and expanded that to align with the vision and goal for that side of the campus, the mixed-use area that we have in the plan. So that's now changed. It was kind of an interesting layout previously, so we've kind of cleaned that up to align with where we are with the vision. And as you can see, that mixed, or the multifamily project is in this upper stretch up on the, what would be the First Avenue location. Again, Home Depot remains with its current zoning designation with the CPD. And what we done, what we have done on the CPD expansion of that has, we've added a TC or Town Center overlay, which allows us to accommodate the mix of uses that we have in the plan and the vision for the campus. So it's going to allow us a higher level of density for residential units, just a nicer, different mix that, you know, the designation of Town Center, we feel, is really going to be reflective in hopefully in where we go with the development here with that part of the campus. We've done a little bit of cleanup on this side, as the, that curved line represents the edge of the Auburn Airport overflight, so that AO designation, you can see these just little pockets here, we've cleaned that up to align with the overflight. So these don't have that designation, cross the line, and then these do have that designation. So we're doing a little bit of cleanup there. The land use currently, it's labeled as mixed-use and open space, and then the small, medium-density residential area. Those are just now going to get changed into basically the direction that we've got with the master plan. So it all gets labeled under the Auburn Bowman Community Plan as the Plaster County Government Center Master Plan. So the direction, the design direction, the standards will be, as folks go to develop, the master plan will be the defining document for the development here. So as, last time I was here, we've, you saw the plan, I think it was about, right about a year ago that I was here presenting and giving you the update on the master plan. The campus plan hasn't changed a lot, we've just been doing a lot of the environmental work up to this point, but we have developed the standards that gives more of the jurisdictional or the prescriptive elements of the plan, including what we see here with a site design, design site review process as projects come in, that we can look at that more internally, that as long as we match the, where we are with the master plan, the guidelines and standards, that we can move those projects ahead, they meet the land uses that we have set out, that we can move those projects quickly. allowable land use across four zoning districts. So we've got four, again, as I was talking, as we've redone the zoning, those four zoning districts have raised uses and align with now the master plan and are built into the standards. Dimensional standards for roadway, pedestrian right-ofways, parking signs, landscapes, the standards have been defined or in the, in the plan right now. And again, these are all the proposed standards and proposed guidelines as we move ahead. Design guidelines have more to do with the aspirational nature of the design effort, and where we want to go with just our values, sustainability, building placement, layout, obviously architectural character. We've got a great standard that's already set, precedent's already set with this building, other buildings that have the look and feel that we want to carry and have carried into the guidelines, so that other projects, as they come onboard, they're going to start to line up and match and look and feel, have the same aesthetic that we've already established here with the newer buildings on campus. Landscape has been a big piece of the puzzle, too. So the ideas of less water usage, we're even thinking about potentially using the NID Canal for maybe, we've got a designated miner's itch for our use, potentially in the future, using that for irrigation landscape systems into the future. And lastly, just a lot of work that's underground, that we've got older and newer systems coming together, as I mentioned, NID, PCWA. So the infrastructure improvements, the implementation plan at a very high level are coming together and are built into the plan and built into the EIR process.
Could I ask a question before you sit down?
Sure, absolutely.
A couple of questions. You mentioned First Street was going to move to the east.
Yeah.
When that housing project, I was, you know, I was just wondering what the timing of that was? Is that going to happen when that project breaks ground, or is that going to be at a later time?
That's a good question. We're going through that analysis now, so we're looking at potentially, you know, when that, so as far as the implementation, as we get going with how that's going to start to lay itself out, we'll figure out where that, you know, where in time that change in alignment sits. We haven't defined where it is now, we're still going through that process.
Something else has changed, I think, since this document probably got put together, is that the emergency shelter is mentioned briefly a couple of times in here. I think it's probably mentioned the most, let's see what page is it? Let's see, page, I guess it's section six to 12 where it's talked about. And it is, again, it's an emergency shelter, it's, has kind of a short-term sort of contractor agreement that's involved in it. What's changed, I think, is that recently, the Board of Supervisors decided that they did not want to pursue looking for alternative sites for the emergency shelter, so that sort of suggests that the possibility that it, I don't want to say in perpetuity, but you're seeing the plan that the building is still going to exist that is currently being used. And so I guess I would suggest that the final EIR maybe look, dig into this a little deeper, because when you consider that there's 100 people that access that site every day, that's a fairly significant impact that's going to continue for, again, an unknown amount of time into the future, when there had been some speculation that it was going to move off-site, so.
That's a very, very good point. And I think as we've gone through, the land use, the zoning that is embedded within the standards now does look at that piece of the puzzle, so that it allows not just emergency, but longer-term, that type of use on the campus here into the future.
Was that one of the reasons why those structures were decided to leave those?
No, actually, the, that whole area, we're looking to make that more of a corporation yard. We can still accommodate the shelter in that location, but we're looking to utilize those buildings, we feel, and we're actually renovating Building 301 for the Elections Warehouse, so we feel that we can use those into the future. And, you know, they, they would be included in the stock of Duitt buildings that would remain.
And there's been some other improvements, I believe there was some new roof, roofing put on.
Yeah, we're doing some new roofing. So there are some improvements. We feel that, you know, they were used as warehouses before, we can utilize them as warehouse, and in this case with the shelter, as housing. So, you know, I think the master plan is set up to accommodate those types of things.
Because these structures, I've heard them described as temporary structures, at least when they were first put up, that they were perceived to only be for a short-term use. And so now here we are, 60, 70 years later.
Seventy-five.
And they're still, yes, 75 years later, and they're still in use. So the question would be, how long are they going to be able to sort of keep patching and using them?
Yeah. Well, I think on those that we, as far as our analysis goes, that we feel that we can continue on with what we've been given in those locations for their purpose. So I think, you know, as we look at the rest of campus, that we had different feelings about that, but in this particular area, we feel that the integrity of those particular buildings matches up with us using those into the future.
Thank you.
So the proposed entitlements for the project are to adopt the master plan update, the development standards, and the design guidelines. We would be amending the Placer County General Plan to establish the master plan land use The project would require revising the Auburn Bowman Community Plan land use designations as well, and amending the community plan to replace and supersede all references to the Duitt Center with the master, with the Placer County Government Center Master Plan We would also be amending the Town Center overlay, so that would be a zoning text amendment. Right now, it says that a Town Center could be used for an area plan or a specific plan, so we would just be adding master plan to that. The project would require rezoning portions of the campus, and it would require a minor boundary line adjustment for the multifamily residential project. There's been significant outreach for this project. The staff have gone to the North Auburn MAC and presented the project as an informational item in 2015 and 2017. The NOP was published in the fall of 2017, and the public scoping meeting was held also in the fall of 2017. And then staff also presented again to the North Auburn MAC September, this past September of 2018. The notice of preparation went out with no initial study. It did assume that a number of the impacts may be significant or potentially significant. The NOP did rule out agriculture and mineral resources, though, so those are not included in the CIR. Areas of controversy or concern that were, that came up during the public outreach period, including the public scoping meeting and in comment letters on the NOP, included topics such as housing, particularly the desire for affordable housing to be included in the project, the loss of historic resources because of the Duitt General Hospital Historic District, changes in visual conditions, a desire for incorporation of sustainability measures to reduce energy and water consumption, more access to public transit, and looking at the potential health effects from asbestos and lead-based paint that may be released during demolition, and then coordination of water supply from the PCWA and NID. And this is all looked at in the EIR. So almost a full EIR here, minus those two resource topics. And the EIR looked at the different project components with a different level of analysis. The program level looked at the master plan update as a whole, and this involves a lesser degree of detail, it provides more of a big-picture analysis. The sequel states that this type of analysis may be prepared on a series of actions that can be characterized as one large project, and then future projects can tear off of that and bring forward more detailed analysis later. The EIR looked at two components at a project level, which is a more detailed analysis for specific projects, and those two components are the multifamily residential project and the Health and Human Services Building. So that's how I'm going to separate the impacts in this discussion going forward. For the Government Center as a whole, majority of the potential environmental impacts were shown to have no impact or less than significant impacts with no mitigation required. The Health and Human Services Building is the same, and I'm not going to go into detail on every resource topic here to save some time. The multifamily project would, would have no impact on similar resources, it would also have no impact on cultural resources. The Government Center as a whole would have a less insignificant impacts on these resource topics with mitigation implemented. So that's biological, cultural, transportation, noise, air quality, geology, hydrology, water quality, hazards, and utilities. The Health and Human Services Building would result in less significant impacts to the following resources with mitigation implemented. So that's biological, cultural, transportation, geology, hydrology, and water quality, hazards, And then multifamily is similar, but less, with less resource topics. For a project of this magnitude, it would only result in significant and unavoidable impacts to two resource areas, and that's cultural and transportation and circulation. For cultural resources, because of the Duitt, the presence of the Duitt Hospital Historic District, any amount of substantial change would likely result in a significant and unavoidable impact. And because the project would demolish, proposes demolishing 35 buildings from that district, this would be significant and unavoidable. Some measures have already been taken, so photographic recreation has already been completed, and additional mitigation would require the county to comply with the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation as much as possible. It is possible that modifying some of the buildings may not be able to comply, so therefore that's significant and unavoidable. For transportation, the project as a whole would result in some delays, mostly along Highway 49 and Bell Road. Many of those, many improvements could be made to reduce those impacts, but they are largely out of the county's control. Those include- Those include Caltrans could modify signals and work on signal optimization. Improvements could be made to 49 near the Target and Education Street by future project applicants. Those would also require Caltransaction. Transportation demand management measures could be implemented, but those are not always guaranteed. And other roadway widenings and improvements along Bell and 49 could be made, but because these are out of the county's control, we cannot guarantee that those would be implemented and the results would occur. So therefore, the EIR calls them significant and unavoidable. So the Health and Human Services Building is, would result in very similar impacts as a whole in regards to cultural and transportation, but as far as transportation, it would result in one less transportation impact. The multifamily project would only result in transportation projects, and those are for the same reasons I described already, that they are out of the county's control and there is no guarantee. CECL requires that an EIR analyze a reasonable range of feasible alternatives that meet most or all of the project objectives and try to reduce the magnitude of avoiding one or more significant environmental impacts from the project. So this EIR includes three alternatives. One is the no project, no build alternative, so that would keep everything as it is today. Alternative two would be greater historic district retention through increased residential intensity, and that would try to reduce impacts to the Duitt General Hospital Historic District by retaining more of those existing historic buildings and reusing them for residential purposes. Alternative three is somewhat similar in that it would retain more of the General Hospital Historic District, but it would reuse them for non-residential uses such as office or commercial space. CECL requires that environmentally superior alternatives be identified, and that alternative is the one that would cause the least damage to the biological and physical environment. In this case, alternative three is that environmentally superior alternative, and that's the greater historic district retention through increased non-residential intensity. And it would be likely to reduce impacts to air quality and greenhouse gases and to cultural resource impacts because it would be retaining more of that historic district. So for continued opportunities for public input, we'll open this up to discuss, to collect public comments today. People are welcome to submit written comments until January 2nd, and I'll put the information in the next slide. Just to note, all commenters on the draft EIR will receive formal responses to their comments and a copy of the final EIR. And then we plan to bring this project forward to the Planning Commission again and to the Board of Supervisors in spring of 2019, so there will be additional opportunities for the public to speak. Here are some details on where to submit comments, if anybody would like to submit written comments. This also shows our website that includes the EIR on the website. And with that, we'll open it up to discussion.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead, Jim.
Question for you. I know now's not the time to, to discuss the wisdom of the county going into speculative development with taxpayer dollars for things like multifamily and commercial property, but is any analysis of the financial impact to existing commercial or multifamily property owners or the ones that are anticipating development going by the creation of this competition in the market been done?
Do you want to address that?
Nothing specific to, I think, to what you've just mentioned as far as competition. What we, what we did and where the multifamily housing came out was mainly out of our economic study and out of our studies that related to the need in the area. So it had more to do on the, on the upside and prepping for, you know, the need in the area, looking to see what the North Auburn area could handle from an economic perspective. But as far as impacts, we haven't done any specific studies to look at kind of how that impact would relate to other homeowners in the area.
Traditionally, the private market addresses these things when there's a need.
Yeah.
And, and we're, we're taking that ability away, and I believe there'll be a financial impact created for that loss of opportunity that probably needs to be looked.
Well, I think the way we've looked at that area is we're, we're open to folks and, because the county's not going to develop it. It's going to be, the vision is there and the master plan is addressing what we feel is needed in that area. But as far as the developing goes, we, we, you know, that's, that's going to be probably for some other folks to decide on, on actually developing the multifamily. And actually, we've got, as you know, the board has had us move ahead with working with Mercy Housing for the multifamily site. So there's, there's an example of an outside entity coming in and developing that location to further a project on, on the campus here.
Sure, and I understand that. I just say, I'd like to say there would certainly be other sites available within the county that could have accommodated that also that are now out of the game.
Yeah, I think we've, we've just, as we've gone through the housing analysis, that's just risen to the top of, as, as a need growth from multifamily, from workforce and affordability that tried to, you know, utilize that space in, in that way and allow something that we feels allows more of a Town Center approach as that new zoning designation allows for that part of the campus.
Anything else? Anyone else want to add a comment before we open it for public comment? Guess we'll move in that direction, but last I heard, no one had signed up to speak, and I guess that's still the case, but we'll, you'll need to sign in because we want to obviously follow up with you. And if you do want to speak, Carol will provide that list for you so you can sign up. So again, this is not about the merits, this is about the technical questions that are on this that you might have. The merits will be addressed at the next meeting as mentioned by Emily that will come sometime in the spring back to us. So again, this would be if you feel that there's some area that needs to further, be further addressed, or if there, you believe that there's some technical flaw in the study as it exists now. So, yeah, anybody want to step up at this point? And again, you can certainly follow up with letters until January 2nd, emails, as Emily put up, letters and emails. We certainly want to hear from you. I don't want to discourage anybody from speaking, but I know that we have some narrow parameters of what we're trying to accomplish today, and I just want to make sure everybody is aware of that.
My name is Eleanor Potuski, and I live in Newcastle, and I've been following this project from the beginning. And this may not be the forum, but my particular concern is that the amount of affordable housing remains at the level that they talk about. We've talked about 100 that I hear today, and, you know, every project in Placer County that I'm aware of or have followed at all starts out with a significant amount of affordable housing, and by the time the project comes to fruition, the affordable housing has basically disappeared. And developers have been allowed to pay some type of fees, and that has reduced the ability of a family to get a house, raise a family, have an investment, retire in that, sell it, borrow for their college kids, for their kids' education. And I just want to make sure that the understanding is there, that this is a very big and real issue to the people of Placer County. It's probably one of the number one things. And so I just want to emphasize that I really hope that the county on this project does not pay fast and loose with the affordable housing. Affordable housing is affordable housing, but it's unattainable housing for a lot of people because it's still too expensive. And I'd like to see the community center still in there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Okay, then I'm going to close the public comment period and again encourage people to respond before January 2nd. And thank you, everybody, for your participation today, and that's the end of our agenda. So thank you, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, and Merry Christmas to everybody.